Time we will call our September the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting to order. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance and invocation by Tony Space.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. We thank you for your unconditional love. We thank you most of all, Heavenly Father, for your son that paid the penalty for our sins. I pray that as we start this meeting tonight, that you'll guide every decision, every action that's made, and that it'll bring honor and glory to you and be for the betterment of the citizens of Madisonville. Father, I ask that you would watch over us and protect us and forgive us where we fail. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Misty Kavanaugh, here. Tony Space. Adam Townsend. Amy Cruz. Frank Stevenson. And Chad Minzer. Mayor, we do have a quorum.
All right, so just for clarification, for social media, want to bring attention to the fact that our last meeting, there was a slide that popped up that said it was a special call meeting. However, it was our regular scheduled meeting. So our last meeting that we had here was a regular scheduled meeting. This is also a regular scheduled meeting. So we had some questions about that on social media, why it was listed as a special call meeting when it was actually a regular call meeting, or a regular scheduled meeting. And it was the slide that was popped up before we started the Facebook Live. So I just want to clarify, the last meeting was a regular scheduled meeting, and tonight is also a regular scheduled meeting, for all of those that have any questions about that on social media. So our first order of business is approval of minutes from our regular meeting on September the seventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
It was called to order by Mayor Kevin Cotton. We had the pledge of allegiance and invocation by councilmember Stevenson. Roll call, we had the mayor and all city council members were present. We had approval of the previous minutes of August the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We had approval of bills and payroll. We had a department report, we had a police department report. We also had a council committee report from the tourism board, where we approved seventy-five thousand dollars in restroom pavilion at Grapevine Lake was approved. And also from the tourism board approved four hundred and eighty-six thousand for operating expenses for the sports complex we paid, and monthly installments of eighty-one thousand for January through June in two thousand and twenty-two. We had first reading of ordinances and ordinance amending chapter one fourteen of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordnances relating to mining in and underlying the city. We also had public speakers on that, and also had a written comment that was approved in, that was adopted into that ord, those minutes. We had a ordinance amending ordinance ninety-three twelve, section thirty point thirty of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Madisonville, an ordinance amending ordinance ninety-three twelve, section thirty point thirty of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Madisonville. We had an ordinance amending chapter thirty of the City of Madisonville relating to the nomination election of candidates for city office. We had an ordinance amending chapter one eighteen of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordnances relating to alcoholic beverages. An ordinance amended chapter ninety-six of the Code and ordinances of the City of Madison relating to property tax. We also had resolutions where we accepted a bid for the ceiling for the buildings located at ninety-eight and ninety-nine East Center was approved. We rejected bids for construction of restroom facilities, parking lot, and walking trail at Cherry Park, and we also got permission to rebid those restroom facilities. We had a resolution approving a lease for the financing of a project through CAECO for the Mack trucks. We also had a resolution to declare a building a surplus, and we accepted a bid for surplus on the Mack trucks. We had a reappointment of Ginny Gibson to the Historic District Commission, and we had a reappointment of Dean Sheets to the Historic District Commission. We also had a permission to bid restroom facilities at Cherry Park and Grapevine Lake. We had a proclamation for Constitution Week and a German.
All right, are there any corrections to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no motion passes. Next, we'll move on to our approval of bills and payroll.
We have the total general fund of two hundred and eighty thousand nine sixty-three ninety-five, total sanitation of one hundred and fourteen thousand four oh two forty-two, total electric utility also, office of one hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and forty-seven cents, total water filter of two hundred thousand two oh six sixty-eight, total wastewater collection and treatment of two hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and one dollars and forty cents. We have estimated biweekly payroll governmental of fifty-one thousand three forty-five, police at one fifty-one eight eighty, eight fifty-five, fire of one hundred and fifty-six thousand twenty-one, transportation of twenty-nine thousand nine eighty-eight, cemetery of seven thousand three eighty-nine, park of sixteen thousand four twelve, sanitation of forty-four thousand four twenty-five, light fund of eighty-three thousand three oh nine, wastewater treatment of sixteen thousand nine seventy-one, wastewater collection of thirty-two thousand seven thirty-one, water and filter of forty-nine thousand four forty-nine, four forty-one, and for a total estimated biweekly payroll of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight eighty-eight.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the bills and payroll?
No move.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, are there any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next, we'll have reports. We'll start with Chief John Dunning with the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. So the Madisonville Fire Department report for August. We had a total of a hundred and fifty-eight incidents. Hundred and ten of those were medical related, and forty-eight were fire related. Twenty-nine of those incidents overlapped each other for a total of eighteen percent of the, the run volume was overlapping. The pre-incident values of the structures we responded to that had the fire incidents was thirteen million three, or thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars, and we had a fire loss of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars for the month. From the time we was dispatched to the time we was responding was an average of one minute and twenty-two seconds. And from the time we was dispatched to, we was arrived on the scene was four minutes and thirty-three seconds. The total amount of average time we spent on the scene was twenty-eight minutes and forty-eight seconds. We had seven hundred and fifty-one monthly training hours. We did sixty-four pre-incident survey plans, twenty-four fire prevention inspections, forty-two code enforcement cases. We did seven community programs, installed one car seat, and issued four smoke alarms. On to page two, this is a breakdown, I'll give you the percentage of what each type of incident we responded to was. On page three of the report is all of the businesses that we were in for the month. And page four is the community outreach programs that we did for the month of August. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Chief Dunning? Right, Chief, thank you very much. Next, we'll have our police department report with Steve, Chief Steve Bryan.
Cotton, councilmembers. Police Department report for August of two thousand and twenty-one. Total responses, four thousand three hundred and forty-seven. Total arrests, three hundred and six, of which eighty-six were felonies and two hundred and twenty were non-felonies. We investigated thirty-seven accidents, and our average response time was four point six minutes. On the page two, our drug seizures for the month. The total seizures amounted to three, uh, six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars in street value, and the most popular drug was methamphetamine, which is, which is pretty typical for, for us. Page three, the traffic accidents, the highest times seem to be Thursdays at around five o'clock. And on to the last page. If I can get to it. Calendar year-to-date, Part One crimes are down twenty-one percent. So be happy to answer any questions anybody's got.
Any questions for Chief Bryan? All right, thank you, sir. All right, next we will move to council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports? All right, if not, we'll move into old business. We'll start with the first, an ordinance amending chapter one fourteen of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordnances relating to mining and underlying the city. And I would like to make some comments about this before we open it up for public comment. We do have a few of you all that have signed up for public comment. Just for a point of reference and clarification, KRS three fifty-one and three fifty-two is a Kentucky surface law and has laws governing the mining regulations to ensure that mining is conducted in a way that protects the environment, the public, and the land. The Attorney General has stated that a city under its general police powers may not prohibit underground mining within the city limits, but may reasonably regulate the underground mining. When the city ordinance in chapter one fourteen oh three was passed in nineteen seventy, it was established that it is unlawful to mine within the city limits of Madisonville. Our ordinance has not been updated to reflect the KRS three fifty-one, three fifty-two since nineteen seventy. The current ordinance that we have in place right now, if we do not pass an ordinance tonight, will have to be repealed. And there'll be no restrictions on mining until something else is put into place. Because the current ordinance that is in place from nineteen seventy is no longer valid because of the KRS. The ordinance that we're discussing tonight, I want to make very clear. This ordinance offers regulations to protect not only the residents of the City of Madisonville, it, it protects the surface owners, it protects the mineral right owners, and it reflects the state law. We currently have before us, in these four versions of the ordinance, ordinances that have been worked on, have been agreed upon with regulations, even by Warrior Coal, who has asked to mine within the city limits. They have agreed to the restrictions that are brought forth in the ordinances that we have before us. Our choices tonight are to pass one of these ordinances or to repeal the ordinance that prohibits coal mining within the city limits. I feel like as the mayor of Madisonville and this city council, they have worked diligently to find an opportunity to stay within the law and to protect the citizens. If in fact, we do not pass an ordinance, it opens the City of Madisonville and its residents up to litigation, of which we have already received notification of. And the city would be liable for taking of property. Which means, whatever the value of that coal is, the City of Madisonville would have to potentially, taken through court, we would be liable for. Which is a lot of money. Right now, our tax rate is half of what it is to the north and half of what it is to the south. If we are hit with this litigation, and if we have to pay these funds out, our tax rate is going to be significantly higher than what it is currently. The City of Madisonville is currently listed at twelve percent below the cost of living in the nation. We have a great opportunity to work with the coal mines right now. With that being said, I have set the precedence that I will not be voting unless it is an emergency or whether it is safety-related. It is up to the legislative body before you to pass an ordinance or to not pass an ordinance. Again, I want you to know that they have worked extremely hard. They've taken a lot of phone calls. They've heard a lot of concerns. But at the end of the day, they've worked hard to represent the City of Madisonville against any impending litigation, hearing your concerns, and working to regulate and restrict mining to the best of its ability. So with that being said, we will open it up for public comment. We will start with Mr. C.D. Palmer. Again, we will have a two-minute time limit, and we ask that you speak into the microphone for those that are on social media to be able to hear, as well as those that are in attendance with us tonight.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. What I'm asking the City Council to do is to postpone voting tonight. I know I, I heard a sense of urgency in your voice, Mayor, but I don't know that that exists. What I'm wanting to do and wanting to propose is that we have this ordinance looked at by an independent, unbiased attorney and an engineering expert. I'm afraid we've relied on throughout this entire ordinance facts, figures presented to us by Warrior Coal. All I'm asking is a postponement and an unbiased investigation. Reason I say unbiased, Joe Evans and his law firm have represented Coal Companies in Madisonville and Hopkins County for four decades. In fact, they're still representing today. Even Alliance Resource Partners, the parent company of Warrior Coal, is a client of Joe Evans and his law firm. That's why I'm wanting an unbiased attorney to take a look at this ordinance before this city council votes on it and passes it. We've already got so many areas within Madisonville that you cannot build a new plant, a new facility on because it's been undermined. So we're adding to that by doing more undermining within the city limits. One more comment and I'll sit down. Warrior Coal Company in two thousand and ten was fined four hundred and ten thousand dollars for mining off their permit. And here we are, they were working under the same regulations, Mayor, that you quoted earlier. So who was not doing their job in two thousand and ten that's going to be done in two thousand and twenty-one? Is the city council going to go underground and regulate the size of pillars? Are they going to regulate how close they are to my property? And one more statement, two hundred and fifty feet to a house is a bogus number. That's why I want a real engineer to take a look at the figures.
We, we appreciate your comments. There are two things that I would like to address. Number one, the KRS states that they can mine up to twenty-five feet. Is that correct, Mr. Dunn? Up to twenty-five feet? And they, in this proposed ordinance, is two hundred and fifty feet. With that being said, it makes us more restrictive than what the state law says. The second part of that is that we have had an unbiased opinion. And we have the Attorney General's opinion, and we also have Kentucky League of Cities, who also represents the City of Madisonville. We've had two different attorneys within the Kentucky League of Cities to review the ordinances, and to review our old ordinance, and to review the law. And that is the unbiased opinion that we have received, which is some of the data that I gave you this afternoon. Each of the council has had that information sent to them. They have also, some of them have had those conversations with the Kentucky League of Cities attorneys themselves to confirm what we have been emailed. So just for a point of reference, we have reached out for a second opinion. The third opinion that we have received has been from an attorney pending litigation that references all the same things that we have discussed this afternoon. So I do appreciate the comment and understand that we have worked to get those unbiased opinions because Kentucky League of Cities does not represent any coal mines. They represent the cities across Kentucky.
I never heard the word engineer mentioned in that sentence.
The engineering, have we, so Chad Minzer, who is the sponsor of the ordinance, has reached out to engineering.
I was going to speak a little bit on that, but I'll wait to hear public comments and then speak on that.
I've not seen a Warrior Coal engineer here. I see a land agent. To me, that's asking like a real estate agent to explain coal mining.
And Mr., Mr. Palmer, you, you understand coal mining extremely well, correct? I mean, you, you, you have been a coal miner. You understand that there are regulations.
I've never mined a lump of coal, but what I did do was interpret regulations for seven different states and help that mining, mining company, the coal mine itself, stay within those regulations.
So, so you did represent a coal mines to make sure that they stayed within their regulations? Which is the same thing that we're working on here. We're putting in those restrictions and regulations as a city. So, so you represented the coal mines at that time to make sure that they stayed in regulations? Mr. Dunn, Warrior Coal has somebody that makes sure, is that correct? Plus, the federal government and the state, IMSA, is there to inspect, is that correct? So, so there are things in place today that might not have been in place before. There are things in place today that wasn't in place in the eighties. I, I do appreciate your comments, and I hope that we have clarified the fact that we have reached an, an unbiased opinion from both the Attorney General's office and from Kentucky League of Cities.
About the four hundred and ten thousand dollar fine for mining off permit. You know, if you get within the city limits and you mine off permit, that sounds like a potential issue to me.
And it, it, again, it's two hundred and fifty feet from, from any residence where the state law says twenty-five feet. Is that, is that, am I correct with that? The property line, okay, I, I stand corrected. So twenty-five foot from the, from the property line.
I'm sure my two minutes is up.
It, it is, thank you very much, Mr. Palmer. All right, next we have Chris Foster.
I'm fairly new in town, only many, three or four years. And I'm, my background is, I'm a physicist. So I did look through the Kentucky Geological Survey document. It was a risk assessment and hazard identification document put out by the State of Kentucky Office. And it, there's a few points that caught my attention that was a little different than what I saw in the documents. One was that the draw range, which is the angle of draw range from the mine to the extent of the damage or the subsidence, was twelve to twenty-six degrees in this Illinois Appalachian basin, which is what we're in. If you do, so the most conservative thing to do in that would be If you do, so the most conservative thing to do in that would be 26 degrees. And if you do that, and these mines are supposed to be 800 feet deep, right? That comes out to 450 feet, not 250. The 250 is closer to the lowest number, the least conservative number. The other thing was that they documented the historic subsidence in the area.
So that is the two-minute mark, but we're going to let you go ahead and finish that. You're next.
There have been numerous reports of subsidence in both Kentucky's coal fields, although not more have been reported in the western than in eastern Kentucky. Perhaps the most widespread are in Madisonville, where individual buildings, housing developments, and parts of shopping mall have required extensive repair or relocation because of mine subsidence, which began in the late 1970s. Subsidance continues to the present day. So those of us that didn't live here for a long time might not know that. The other thing is that Walmart decided to move out since they were sinking into the ground, and they didn't stay in Madisonville. I suppose Madisonville wanted them to, but they moved out.
And again, that was under a previous administration. I do know that the previous administration in the council did work with Walmart on several options for that. But Mike, if I can ask, on the 250 to 450 feet, on the 250 feet, if I'm looking at the maps correctly, you're more than 250 feet from any structure, is that correct, other than Mr. Markham's?
I'm right.
Are you more than 450 feet? I'm asking the mines, Micah Dunn is right behind you. But it would be well beyond the 250 feet if I'm looking at those maps correctly, is that?
No, the maps came within about 250 feet of our house.
And what is your address, Dr. Foster? 5565 Hanson Road?
It's on of only about six structures that are affected by this. And one thing, one comment I had to make is if there's only six houses that are affected, why we weren't notified?
Sir, if you watched the last, the last meeting, we have been discussing this for about six months. It's been in the newspaper, it's been on TV, it's been in the radio.
We do follow the news fairly closely and take the paper, but.
If you take the paper, it's made, every single meeting that we've had has been top of the fold, big bold letters, headlines.
Not everybody follows the City Council.
But if you take the paper.
Six people that are having their houses undermined, you'd think you'd notify them.
We appreciate your comments, and we'll move on to the next one, which is Dr. Joe Leonard.
Mayor and City Council, I will try to be brief and state my point. After our last meeting a few weeks ago, I went home and I thought about all that went on. I ask a question as to what was the recourse of the miners like Warrior Coal and Alliance and those that had coal up under the ground that wanted it mined? Well, Mr. Evans said that, and gave an example of Hanson, they went back, they changed their mind after they found out that they could be sued. I just ascertained from all of that that I knew what the vote is going to be, that this council is going to vote and allow the mining companies to mine within the areas that is allotted on the map. Well, that's good, that's fine. I'm not against mining, but I'm against them coming up under my house. And what assurance can you give me, Mr. Mayor, that they won't break the lines and move toward the houses where I live and sneak in there and get the coal? I have talked to miners this week, last two weeks, and what I've heard I didn't like. They tell me that a lot of the times that the coal miners or the company just disregards the line that they're supposed to stop at. If there's good coal at 25 feet, 30 feet further, they say keep going. Now, I've been told that, whether that's true or not. I want some kind of assurance. And I'm right close to that line. I've got the map there. You can look up there where Hunter's Glen is and where the yellow line is is not too far from my house. So here is what I am asking, Mr. Mayor. I am asking this. If this ordinance is repealed or we lay it aside, who will meet with the Planning and Zoning Committee, or have you already done that, and Board of Adjustments, to inquire or discuss what regulations or ordinance can be put into place to protect the voters on the north side of town? Now, let me say this. I've heard, well, the state's going to regulate this. The state's going to check on the mining companies. Well, who answers to the town? I think the city of Madisonville should have somebody to answer to the city, to you, Mr. Mayor, or to the council, that they have checked periodically and they have not gone beyond the lines. I think the citizens of Madisonville are owed that. I think that that is just a reasonable request that somebody reports to the council or to you, Mr. Mayor, and states, we've checked and they've stayed within the parameters of what they're supposed to stand. You know, I came to Madisonville in 2001, and I've learned a lot about Madisonville. I've made my home here. I built a house here. And I don't want one day to get out there and look at the bricks just crumpling around and, oh my goodness, subsidence has taken place. I understand now why businesses don't want to come to Madisonville. They come, they build in a certain place, year down the road, two years down the road, they walk in one day and side of the building is just sunk down in the ground. I am concerned, and I guess you can tell that from my words and my voice tones, but I want some assurance that the city is going to be in contact with whoever's watching Warrior Coal and make sure they do what they're supposed to do. Can you assure me that somebody will do that?
So what I can tell you, sir, is in the ordinance, it does spell out that Warrior Coal has to provide those maps on a quarterly basis, is that correct? And that will be verified with the state and with IMSA. So that will be submitted to the city of Madisonville, sir. To your point, again, the city of Madisonville in 1970 put an ordinance in place that is no longer in line with the KRS, and it is illegal for the city of Madisonville to prohibit mining in the city. What we are attempting to do here as a council is we are attempting to put those restrictions and regulations in place to protect you as a property owner, and I feel like that these ordinances have done that. And Warrior Coal, who has been the ones to bring this to the table, have been more than willing to work with the city of Madisonville on those restrictions and regulations. As we've had meetings in the past and as there have been concerns brought up in the past, they have adjusted their maps accordingly. And so, yes, there will be quarterly maps that will be submitted to the city of Madisonville. With that, the other thing I want to address, sir, is we've had over 50 business license in the past couple of years. I think the past three years has been over 50 business license in the city of Madisonville. So I want you to know that we are very business friendly here in our community, and we want to continue on that path. Right now, there's a new building being built that is going to, that not only saved jobs in our community, but is going to double in number the jobs that we have. It's just as important that we save those jobs for those coal miners as well, as many of us in this room have been affected by coal money for many years. It's paid for our education or it's paid for our homes. It's the reason that the regional medical center that is now Baptist Health Deaconess Madisonville is in our community is because of coal, is the reason that we have a community college that has over 2,000 students here in our community that travel to our community. Those are the reasons that those things exist in our community. The reasons that our churches have been very successful over the many years that we've been here is because of the funds that the coal mines have brought in through ties and offerings. There are so many things that we can talk about, about the benefits. Is it not the right of the employees of those coal mines? Is it not the right of the families that they represent to have the same things that we've been afforded? And we already know that it's against the law for the city of Madisonville to prohibit mining in a city. We are working on your behalf to put those regulations and restrictions in place. The coal mines are represented here today. They have, in fact, agreed to what these restrictions and regulations are, and we are in line with what the law says. So when it comes to litigation, we will be able to stand behind the ordinance that we will pass if it passes tonight. I don't know, I'm glad that you know what the vote's going to be because I don't, and I don't know until we run the ordinance. But I do hear your concerns and trust that we're going to do everything we can to protect the city, which is why we're putting an ordinance in place with restrictions.
Mayor, you misunderstood me. I'm not against coal mining. I've been the pastor of coal miners for 14 years here. I've been the interim pastor of churches where there are coal miners there, and when the coal company moves out, I grieve with them. My point is, I want somebody, you can call him a watchdog or whatever you want to call him, to make sure that the coal companies stay away from the homes on the north side of town. That's what I'm saying, and that's what I'm asking. And please understand, I'm not against coal mining.
I understand, I truly do. 352.47 over the KRS is the certification of the maps. And there's the regulations that spell it out on how they have to certify those maps and what that looks like. And this was done in, it looks like it was updated in 2000. So the 2010 fines, I'm not sure where they came from, maybe the mines wants to address those. But at the end of the day, for the city of Madisonville, we will be doing that by GPS coordinators, and that will be given to us through certified maps into the city that will be followed up and certified by the state.
Yes, sir.
All right, next we will have Oda Ingles.
I'll be brief. I don't even have a fight in this. I'm an engineer for the past 50 years. I've been in the mining and civil and mining engineering business here in this county. And I just have a few points I'd like to point out to you, and maybe it'll make up your way, your mind. Most of our subsidence in and around Madisonville, in fact, all of it that I know of, has been caused by the number 11 seam of coal. I have never seen in my 50 years where the number nine seam of coal has caused subsidence. There's a big difference in the formations above each one of these seams. In every case of subsidence around Hopkins County or around Madisonville, the overburden has been less than 250 feet. Here, we're looking at 700 feet down to the number nine seam of coal. Should there be subsidence down in the mining area? When that roof collapses, it gradually works it way up through the layers of rock and so on, and it would never, in my opinion, reach the surface. That's just some brief comments I have about that. Now, some of the costs you're looking at here, should there be a restriction and they not get to mine this coal, you're going to be liable for somewhere between $5,000 and $6,000 an acre for this coal that you're restricting. Like I said, if I own coal out there, it wouldn't make any difference to me whether I collected off of earned royalties from the mining company or I collect off the city of Madisonville. And Alliance Coal has gone a stepfather by saying they would stay back from these structures. Technically, you're liable for the coal under those structures too, and that would probably come out eventually. Like I said, it wouldn't matter to me whether you mined my coal or not. I would either collect off of the mining company or off of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Next, we'll have Ms. Rudd.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council people. My name is Mildred Rudd, and my sister Pamela Rudd-Hilton, and I own Rudd Family Farms. We were annexed into the city limits over 30 years ago. We petitioned that the farm land result did not be annexed into the city limits, and I regret due to this decision that you have to make this difficult decision. Today, we're asking for freedom as Kentucky landowners. We request that we be granted the privilege of making decisions regarding the use of our land that has been in our family for five generations. Allow us to do what we feel is best for our farm land and business. If you own land, do you want the government dictating to you what can be done and what can't be done? We ask that you pray about this so that you will make the right decision regarding our freedom. We desire to exercise our freedom for which many fought and died. May God guide and bless your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd. With that being said, that does complete all of our speakers that have signed in this afternoon. With that being said, we will pass it over for our ordinance to be read.
Mayor, if I could address the council and you as well. I grew up in coal mining. My dad was a coal miner for much of my life, and he passed away a couple of years ago. My mom is a product of coal mining because she worked at the regional medical center because of coal mining. So this is very personal to me. As I start looking at the ordinance and what it states, we received an opinion from our attorney here at the city. We also heard the comments that you guys had, and I appreciate everyone that has shown up to the meeting and appreciate everyone that has made the comments of this meeting. But understand, we've taken these very much to heart, and we have diligently worked to make sure that we can be restrictive enough to allow mining, but also protect the citizens of Madisonville. And that is going to be all citizens, whether they are mineral owners, whether they are surface owners, or whether they're just citizens of Madisonville and do not occupy in this transaction. I will tell you, I have looked at mining maps, I have talked to mining engineers, I've talked to geologists, I've talked to architects about why is the south end of the county had seen more subsidence to the north of the county? Mr. Ingles hit the nail on the head. The 11 seam caused a lot of that, but also a lot of the subsidence that's happened on the south end of the county happened prior to 1970. What happened in 1970, Surface Owner Reclamation Act was enacted, and so it changed the laws of how you would reclaim a piece of property. Before that, there was no laws. And so as mining has changed, so has the regulations. My dad was laid off from Peabody Coal Mines Camp 2 in approximately 1992. He was one of the fortunate ones that was in a union mines, and so he went back to Highland Mines approximately 2004 to work his hundred and so many days so that he could have full benefits in retirement. His statement to me then was, coal mining is not what it used to be. Coal mining is completely changed of what it is used to be. So when I'm. it is used to be. So when I make this, uh, recommendation to the council, um, understand that this is very personal to me, but understand because of that, I've spent, I would say forty hours plus researching, getting attorney general's opinions, getting different attorneys' opinions that either represent the city, have represented other coal companies, as, uh, Mr. Palmer stated. And I have tried to do as much research as I can. I have maps of old mining permits. I have maps of old mining maps showing where they actually made cuts within the city. So it is my recommendation that we, um, approve this version of the ordinance that has been read. Um, I believe that I would personally like to start with version four, uh, in, uh, in this council, and then do that by roll call vote. And if that does not pass, then we look at other options. Um, but as of today, I would like to submit in, uh, version four to be considered within the council.
It ordained by the city council of the city of Madisonville, Kentucky as follows. Chapter one fourteen of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances hereby amended as follows. The council further finds that in order to minimize the risk to future generations of its citizens from exposure to known and existing hazards caused by underground mining, that it is in the interest of the general welfare that future, that further mining in and underlying a city be restricted as herein provided. Regulations. It shall be unlawful to mine coal by the surface auger or strip method of mining within the city limits of the city. It shall be unlawful to mine by the longwall method of mining within the city limits of the city without the prior written consent of the owner of the surface estate. There shall be no mining of coal by the underground or deep shaft method of mining within the city limits of Madisonville, except within the area identified on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Mining in and all other areas of the city of Madisonville is expressly prohibited. Mining within the authorized area identified on Exhibit A shall be subject to the following restrictions. Number one, no mining shall occur within two hundred and fifty linear feet of any residence or occupied dwelling located on the surface estate within the prior written, without the prior written consent of the record title owner of the surface estate. If there are multiple owners of the property, consent shall be obtained from all owners of legal age. Said written consent shall be filed of record in the Hopkins County Court Clerk's Office. Number two, if there are occupied dwellings on the surface estate, no coal shall be mined underlying the surface estate of the property without the prior written consent of the owner or owners of the occupied dwellings. Said written consent shall be filed of record in the Hopkins County Court Clerk's Office. Number three, no coal shall be mined within the permitted area unless the coal is at depth at least six hundred and fifty feet below the surface. Number four, no mining related facilities, except facilities related to minor health and safety, shall be located on the surface without the written consent of the surface owner. No mine entrance shall be located within the city limits of Madisonville. Number five, it shall be unlawful, it shall unlawful to mine coal by the underground or deep method of mining, even within the permitted area identified on Exhibit A, unless the person or entity proposing to conduct mining operations provides unto the city of Madisonville prior to the commencement of such mining operations. A, a true, accurate, and legible map showing the area proposed to be mined, identifying their own all existing residents and occupied dwellings located on the surface of the area proposed to be mined. B, written consent from all record title owners of the surface area or the surface estate for mining operations to be conducted underlying the surface estate where the surface and mineral estates are not owned by the same person or entity. Number six, once mining operations have commenced within the permitted area identified on Exhibit A, the person or entity conducting such mining operations shall provide unto the city true and accurate mining maps with supported mathematical calculations showing the amount of coal mined and removed from the property, which shall not exceed fifty percent of the original coal in place, leaving at least fifty percent of the coal in place to support the surface estate. The foregoing information shall be provided, shall be furnished no less frequent than every ninety days, and shall be subject to public inspection. Sufficient coal shall be left in place to protect all existing structures located on the surface estate from mine-related subsidence. Number seven, all mining operations shall be conducted in compliance with all applicable state, federal, and local laws, rules and regulations applicable to said mining operations. Number eight, if a surface owner consents to mining operations beneath the surface estate at the request of the owner of the surface estate, the person or entity, entity conducting the mining operations will provide at its own expense to the owner of the surface estate, a pre-mining survey of any occupied dwelling located on the surface estate to establish a baseline showing the condition and state of repair of the property prior to the commencement of mining operations. Number nine, the person or entity conducting mining operations shall be responsible for any and all damages resulting from such mining operations. And number ten, any person or entity found to have intentionally violated this ordinance shall be permanently barred from conductive future mining operations within the city of Madisonville, and shall reimburse the city for all legal fees and costs incurred by the city in proving such violation. Section one fourteen point ninety-nine of the penalty, any person who violates this section, or section one fourteen point oh three, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor, and shall be subject to a fine of not less than two hundred and fifty dollars and not more than five hundred dollars for each violation thereof. Each day's operation in violation of this ordinance shall constitute a separate violation. In addition to the foregoing penalty, the city of Madisonville shall have the right to seek an injunction to prohibit mining operations which are in violation of this ordinance. In the event a court of competent jurisdiction determines that mining operation is in violation of this ordinance, the mining operator shall be responsible for the payment of all court costs and reasonable attorney fees incurred by the city of Madisonville in enforcing this ordinance.
So Chad, do we have, is it a motion for version four?
Yes.
So we have a motion for version four. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any discussion?
Let's see.
Oh, let's do discussion.
Yeah, sorry.
I know you've made some reference to the, the, uh, ordinance in question that we're amending, having been put in place in nineteen seventy. And you made reference to the state regulations. But I think the most operative thing for me in our consultations with Kentucky League of Cities, which, uh, has the interest of cities and their integrity, uh, at the heart, uh, rather than coal, coal mines or any other industry for that matter particularly. Uh, but the salient point for me in the, in the balancing these competing interests, uh, and the, my question was the, the, with regard to the reality of a potential claim against the city for prohibiting, uh, the mining. Uh, and as to my knowledge, there's been no cited precedent cases of such a cause of action being successfully pursued. Yet at the same time, we have this reality of that, that prospect being out there, and that the, the attorney general opinion, uh, by the way, the date of that was nineteen seventy-nine, uh, when that was issued, that, that basically said, you can't do this. Uh, so that, that kind of throws the weight on, well, uh, I don't want to be the one in case law to, uh, to validate, uh, that, that, uh, opinion of the attorney general, uh, having been brought to, to bear in testimony in a case of cause of action against the city of Madisonville. Um, that, they have their property owners who do have mineral estates that, uh, have spoken and are concerned to have that asset, uh, come, uh, come to their hand. And, um, they have a, a reasonable basis whether they, uh, you know, I don't know their heart, but you know, it'd be reasonable for them to take that action and say, well, as, as one person said, I don't care whether I get it from the coal mining royalties or from, from the city that has prohibited it, you know, it, I still get it, you know. Uh, so we're faced with that dilemma and our, the, 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 uh, the weight of the matter in my mind goes to not being able to prohibit it, which may be the interest of many. Uh, we, we find ourselves reasonably, finding a way to reasonably regulate to the protection of and balance of the competing interests that we have. So that's my discussional input.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Kim, can we have a roll call?
Chad.
Today, I will vote in favor of this ordinance simply because it does enact more restrictive measures than we have ever had within the coal mining entrance. All mining operations shall be conducted in compliance of applicable state, federal, and local laws, rules and regulations of said mining. And any person or entity found to have intentionally violated this ordinance shall be permanently barred from conducting future mining operations within the city of Madisonville, and shall reimburse the city for all legal fees and costs incurred of the city in proving such violation. So today, I will vote in favor of this ordinance simply because it becomes more restrictive.
Frank?
Yes.
Amy?
Uh, I am a yes. Um, I want the city to know that, you know, I prayed about this. Um, coal mining has fed my family for many years. Um, my dad was a coal miner, just like Chad's. My dad owned a machine shop business in town that also worked on coal equipment. Um, I'm just a girl that has a political science degree, and it didn't take me long to read KRS and realize that, you know, coal mining companies can mine coal, and that what we had before us was, was gonna hurt us. So I realize that some of you all did not want this to pass, and, and it may not. There's only three of us that have voted. Um, but I want you to understand that there was a lot of thought process put into this. Um, you know, I know at the last meeting, you know, it was said that, um, you know, we're gonna remember who votes yes, and I'm comfortable with that. I ran a campaign. I didn't think I'd win the first time. So I'm okay with that. Um, so I just want y'all to know that. Thank you.
Adam?
When this first came to the city council, there were two properties. There was a farm, and there was the Boy Scout camp. With those two properties, I was perfectly okay with both of those properties. Um, then there became more properties that came towards the city council. Uh, that's when I became more hesitant about this issue. Um, I, along with you two as well, uh, and son of a coal miner. Um, so I know the industry, my dad retired from it after thirty-eight years. Um, I hear, in my position, not only do I have to, um, look at certain areas, but I have to look at the city as a whole. And I believe the ordinances we have in front of us will protect the city as a whole more than what we have now. Um, and that's why I'm voting yes.
Yes.
Misty?
No.
Mayor, that is a five to one vote.
Okay, five to one, uh, motion for version one of the city ordinance amending chapter one fourteen of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances relating to mining in and underlying the city of Madisonville passes. Version four.
Version four.
What did I say, version one?
One, it's version.
I'm sorry. I stand corrected as version four has been approved. Okay, next, we will move on to the ordinance amending ordinance ninety-three dash twelve, section thirty point thirty, compensation of city council members of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Madisonville, Kentucky.
Chapter thirty point thirty of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances hereby amended as follows. Section thirty point thirty, elected officers. A council shall be, show by ordinance fix the compensation of every elected city officer not later than the first Monday in May in the year in which the officer is elected. An elected officer's compensation shall not be changed after his election or during his term of office. Effective January first, twenty twenty-three, the annual compensation of a city council member is and shall be fixed at fifteen thousand dollars. The amounts stated above shall be subject to adjustment as provided in KRS eighty-three A point oh seven oh, and as provided in chapter thirty point thirty-four of the Code of Ordinances.
All right, do I have a motion to, to approve the ordinance amending ninety-three dash twelve, section thirty point thirty, compensation of the city council members of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Madisonville?
Don't move.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Or is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to go ahead and say a few things about this since I was the one who proposed this ordinance. Um, as I was looking at, which will come up next, said the salary of the mayor, the salary of the city council, uh, I discovered that the base salary of the city council has not been raised since nineteen eighty-three. Uh, there have been some cost of living adjustments that have happened since then. Um, when looking for what would be considered, I believe, a fair and reasonable salary for a city council member, I reached out to the Kentucky League of Cities. I received some information from the Kentucky League of Cities that talked about the population, um, of different breakdowns of council members and commissioners throughout the state and what they made. Uh, there was a population range of eight thousand to nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, uh, which we come in at the top of that population range, uh, where the maximum salary of a city council member in that range was twenty thousand dollars. The seventy-five percentile would be thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-two. So this ordinance would affix this salary twelve hundred dollars, a little over twelve hundred dollars above where a seventy-five percentile would be, but yet our population in that range would be in the ninety percentile. Uh, just want to make a few points that this, uh, the salary raise will not go into effect until January first, twenty twenty-three. So it will be after the next election. Uh, and also, I wanted to, with, with making this motion and proposing this ordinance, uh, this is not just about the next council. Uh, this is about the council for the next eight, uh, ten years. Uh, I believe the job has changed, uh, of a council member since nineteen eighty-three, uh, and I believe that the compensation should reflect such change. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. Kim, can we have a roll call?
Adam?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Misty?
No.
Amy?
No.
Frank?
Abstain.
Yes.
Okay.
Three yeses and abstain, it does pass. So ordinance amending the ordinance ninety-three dash twelve, section thirty point thirty, the compensation of city council members of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Madisonville does pass. Next, we'll move on to the next one, which is the ordinance amending ordinance ninety-three dash twelve, section thirty point thirty, compensation of the mayor of the Code of, Code of Ordinances of the city of Madisonville, Kentucky. And as I said in the previous meeting, and I will say in this meeting, this is not anything that I have brought to the attention of the council. This is during the research that Mr., or Councilman Townsend has done, uh, recognized that even, uh, the position of the mayor had not been adjusted, uh, since the ninety, I think it was ninety-three. Um, I, I am, I am the one that chooses to work sixty hours a week for the, the pay that I receive. I knew what that pay was when I ran for office, and I love every minute of my position, and will continue to do that as long as the citizens, um, see fit for me to be in office. Uh, but with that being said, do we have a motion for the ordinance amending ordinance ninety-three dash twelve, section thirty point thirty, the compensation of the mayor of the Code of, Code of Ordinances of the city of Madisonville, Kentucky? Oh, she has to read it first. Sorry.
I like hearing me read anyway, don't you? Whereas the city of Madisonville has continued to grow and develop, and as such, the operations of the city have grown larger and more complex. Whereas the city council of the city of Madisonville desires that the mayor's position be fairly and adequately compensated based on the expected job performance and duties of the mayor, which is expected to be a full-time job. Chapter thirty point thirty of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances hereby amended as follows. Section thirty thirty, elected officers. The council shall by ordinance fix the compensation of every elected city officer not later than the first Monday in May in the year in which the officer is elected. An elected officer's compensation shall not be changed after his election or during his term of office. The annual compensation of the mayor is shall be fixed at seventy-five thousand effective January first, twenty January first, twenty twenty-three. The amount stated above shall be subject to adjustments as provided in KRS eighty-three A, point oh seven oh and as provided in chapter thirty, point thirty-four of the Code of Ordinances.
Now that she's read the ordinance, do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Moved.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Once again, Mayor, I would just like to say, the reason for doing, adjusting these salaries is the fact that it was, as he said, nineteen ninety-three. It went into effect in nineteen ninety-four, the last time that the base salary of the mayor has been adjusted. Once again, I do believe that that job has changed some over these last twenty-seven years. And I do believe also that, that the salary should, should reflect the time that is put into this job. Also too, I would say that the mayor is the CEO of over a three-hundred-person-plus company and I believe he should be compensated so as well. Thank you.
So is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. I'm just gonna start with you, Adam.
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Misty?
No.
Amy?
No.
Frank?
Yes.
And Chad?
Yes.
So the vote is four to two. Motion for the ordinance amending ordinance ninety-three dash twelve, section thirty, point thirty, compensation of the mayor does pass. Next, we have an ordinance amending chapter thirty of the City of Madison Code of Ordinances relating to the nomination and election of candidates for city office. Yeah, go ahead and read it.
Be ordained by the City of Madisonville, Kentucky as follows. Chapter thirty of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances hereby amended as follows. The nomination and election of candidates for city office effective upon the adoption and publication of this ordinance, the nomination and election to the offices of mayor and the city council shall be nonpartisan and shall be governed by KRS eighty-three A, point oh four five, subsection two, or chapter two, A and B, A and C, KRS eighty-three A, point oh five oh, KRS eighty-three A, point one seventy, KRS eighty-three A, point one seven five, and KRS chapters one sixteen to one twenty-one. A candidate for city offices shall file his or her nonpartisan, I mean, I'm sorry, his or her nomination papers with the county clerk of the county not earlier than the first Wednesday after the first Monday in November of the year preceding the year in which the office will appear on the ballot and not later than the last Friday following the first Monday in January before the day fixed by KRS, chapter one eighteen, for holding a primary for nominations for the office. Signatures for nomination papers shall not be affixed on the document to be filed prior to the first Wednesday after the first Monday in November of the year preceding the year in which the office will appear on the ballot. All nomination papers shall be filed no later than four P M. local time when filed on the last day on the papers, on which the papers are permitted to be filed. Council members, the election term of office at a regular election held every other year at a time that is in accordance with KRS, chapters one sixteen to point one twenty-one, there shall be elected six council members from the six wards of the city as follows. From the first ward, one council member. From the second ward, one council member. From the third ward, one council member. From the fourth ward, one council member. From the fifth ward, one council member. And from the sixth ward, one council member. The qualifications, a member shall be at least eighteen years of age, shall be a qualified voter in the city and shall reside in the city throughout the term of office. A candidate for council shall be a resident for the city for not less than one year prior to his/her election. And she'll be a resident of the ward for which the council office is sought.
Okay, so I have one that we know that is here for public comment. Ms. Vincent, if you'd like to step up to the podium and if you would please speak into the mic for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Pat Vincent. I'm the chairwoman of the Hopkins County Democratic Party. This issue has come before this council on many different occasions due different terms. Most of you are new to this session of the council where this has been brought up. I didn't know if you were aware of the costs for putting on an election. To go to a nonpartisan election, you are talking about increasing costs because you're gonna have to print a nonpartisan ballot in these precincts of the city. I don't know if you've noticed or not, but when you were out campaigning, you probably saw that you might have up to four precincts in your ward voting in that precinct race. So it's very important to know, you know, how this will affect the taxpayers' costs for putting a nonpartisan ballot in a primary. Currently, you have a Democratic primary and a Republican primary. But if we do this, then that opens the door to independents also voting in a primary election if you have to go to a primary. So that's something I hope that you will think about and consider in your vote tonight. But the party itself has always taken the stand that we like to see the Democrat and Republican partisan races in the city of Madisonville. And I'm losing my voice, please excuse me. But the citizens have also said they like that opportunity. That way they know the positions of their candidates and where they stand. So tonight I'm asking you to think about this and we would like to see you to continue with partisan races here and to make sure that we do continue with the wards. I am glad that you have kept nominations to wards. That was always a concern of the party. But to think about the cost and about the transparency and seeing about fair representation. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Vincent? So do we have a motion to amend the chapter thirty of the City of Madison Code of Ordinances relating to the nomination and election of candidates for the city office?
So moved.
Do we have a second? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I will just say, talking about what was brought up with the, the funding, during the general election, all candidates are voted on citywide anyway, so we would all be on all ballots that are given out through the city, whether it be Ward one or whatever ward it is. Also, there are, we are one of seven cities out of four hundred and sixteen in the state of Kentucky that still run partisan elections. Now that includes your Lexington's, your Louisville's and city like, cities like that. If you look around us, we, Madisonville and Hopkinsville are the only two that still run a partisan election. You know, Henderson is nonpartisan, Paducah's not partisan. And if you look at the issues that we deal with here, forth in the city council, I don't really see where you would call we have much Republican or Democrat review, you know, partisan ideas that come up. But we are one of four, I'm sorry, one of seven out of four hundred and sixteen cities in the city that do still, I mean, the state that still do partisan elections.
Do we have any other discussion?
The matter of, of the primary and, in the case of a nonpartisan, the way that we have proposed this amendment, that historically, there's hardly, hardly ever time, even with a partisan, that more than two people have filed for the same office. One Republican, one Democrat. If more than one, they, we had, they had a primary in a Republican or a Democrat. But historically, there, there have been really hardly any cases where there's been more than two people. And in that case, in this structure, those two candidates go straight to the general ballot. Those are the two candidates. If there is a primary, if more than two people file for a particular ward office, then a primary is held, non, a nonpartisan primary, and the ward still retains its capacity to have a voice in who are the candidates that go to the general election, which was the chief objection, and the last time this was brought up was, because there's two ways that a city can go from partisan to nonpartisan. And the way before that was presented just eliminated the primary period. And that, that was objectionable to many people to lose their ward voice in saying, who's gonna go to the general election? That's just a little history.
And thank you, Councilman Stevenson, for, for your time and your, your help with drafting this, making sure that we had these parts to look at things that in the, in the past had been, may not have been looked at. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. If two, if three candidates would file prior to the primary election and then two of those candidates would be elected to then go to the general election.
So that's correct. And no one would be able to file after, after the primary has been done. Once that first part has been done, that is whenever it will end, all filing. So you will know in January, A, if you're going to have a primary, or B, will it go straight to the general election and, and those things, you won't, there will not be the late filing that previously could happen.
Any other discussion? Kim, can we have a roll call?
Well, Adam, you made that motion. I'm gonna start with you.
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Misty?
No.
Amy?
No.
Frank?
Yes.
And Chad?
Yes.
And that one's five to one.
Okay, with a five to one vote, the ordinance amending chapter thirty of the City of Madison Code of Ordinances relating to the nomination and election of candidates for city office does pass. Next, we will move on to the ordinance amending chapter one eighteen of the City of Madison Code of Ordinances relating to the alcoholic beverages.
I'm only gonna read the part that is changing in this. We talking about distilled spirits and wine license fees. The city shall have the power and authority to issue the following kinds of distilled spirits and wine license upon proper application and the payment of the prescribed fee. Distillers license per annum fee is five hundred dollars and the microbrewery license per annum is five hundred dollars. Chapter one eighteen, point twenty-eight, business authorized by distillers license, class B distillers license. A distiller's license shall authorize the licensee to engage in the business of distiller at the premises specifically designed in the license to maintain aging warehouses and to transport for himself or herself only any alcoholic beverage which he or she is authorized under this license to manufacture or sell. The licensee shall transport alcoholic beverages only by a vehicle operated by himself or herself which has affixed to its sides at all times a sign of form and size prescribed by the state board containing, among other things, the name and license number of the licensee. No distilled spirits shall be transported on the same truck or vehicle as malt beverages except as a common carrier unless the owner of the truck or vehicle holds a distributor's license. Paragraph two, the manufacture of distilled spirits at the distillery shall not be less than six hundred gallons in one year and the distiller that produces fifty thousand gallons of, or less of distilled spirits per calendar year at the premises shall obtain a distiller's license, class B craft distillery. And then we're going over to section one eighteen, point twenty-eight, business authorized by a microbrewery license. The microbrewery permitted to sell malt beverages produced on the premises for on premises or off premises purposes without transferring physical possession at a distributor if the microbrewery meets reporting requirements and has both a retail drink license and a retail package license. Microbrewery to pay wholesale and excise tax on sales of malt beverages sampling by employees. Number one, a microbrewery license shall authorize the licensee to perform the following functions. Engage in the business of a brewer under the terms and conditions of KRS two forty-three, point one fifty, provided that production of a malt beverage at the microbrewery shall not exceed fifty thousand barrels in one year. Now going over to page three, and in accordance with the provisions of this section, a microbrewery license holder may hold a retail drink and package license both on and off the premises of the microbrewery. The holder of the microbrewery license is exempt from the provisions of KRS two forty-four, point five seventy and two forty-four, point five ninety as applied to any retail license held by the microbrewery license holder and from, and any other sections which would restrict the co-owner of the microbrewery license and any other retail license described in this section. Sell malt beverages produced on the premises of the microbrewery for on premises purposes without having to transfer physical possession of those malt beverages to a licensed distributor provided. Number one, the microbrewery possesses a retail drink license for those premises. Number two, the microbrewery reports and pays all taxes required by subsection five A and B of this section of the Department of Revenue at the time of the manner required by the Department of Revenue in accordance with its powers under KRS one thirty-one, point one thirty, subsection three. And C, sell malt beverages produced on the premises of the microbrewery for off premises purposes without having to transfer physical possession of those malt beverages to a licensed distributor provided that the microbrewery possesses a retail package license for those premises. And number two, the microbrewery reports and pays all taxes required by subsection five A and B of this section to the Department of Revenue at the time and in manner required by the Department of Revenue in accordance with its powers under KRS one thirty-one, point one thirty, subsection three. The hours of sale. Class B distillers retail sales premises for which these had granted a license for class B distillers retail sales shall be permitted to remain open between the hours of six A M. and twelve midnight, Monday through Saturday, and from twelve noon and twelve midnight on Sunday.
I think I missed that on page two.
Stop. You can read it.
If, do we have a motion for the ordinance amending chapter one eighteen of the City of Madison Code of Ordinances relating to alcoholic beverages?
Moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Kim, can we have a roll call?
I'm gonna start with you. Tony?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
It will be a unanimous vote, so that one passes. Next, we move on to an ordinance amending chapter ninety-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madison relating to property tax.
Okay, and on the property tax, we are, let me see here. I can share whatever. All real and personal property within the corporate limits of the city, subject to tax for the city purposes, shall be assessed each year as provided by law and ad ver lorem taxes shall be levied at their own for city purposes. I'm gonna go on down to the due and delinquency dates because this is the only thing that is actually changing, except for one other thing. But all taxes hereunder shall be due and payable on or before November the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. A discount of two percent shall be allowed for each tax bill for general purposes if paid on or before October the thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And these tax bills remain unpaid after November the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, shall be declared delinquent and shall bear interest at a rate of twelve percent per annum until paid. And then if you go to the ad ver lorem tax rates for twenty twenty-one, the ad ver lorem tax rates for twenty twenty-one shall be as follows. The tax rate for real estate shall be, well, point one twenty-two for each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. The tax rate for motor vehicles and watercraft shall be fifteen cents for each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. And the tax rate for all tangible property shall be point one six five seven for each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation.
I have a motion to accept the ordinance amending chapter ninety-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madison relating to property tax.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Amy Cruz?
No.
Adam?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Five to one vote, the ordinance passes. Next, we have some new business. We have some resolutions. First resolution is to declare lots as surplus property.
Whereas the City of Madisonville owns the following lots, two fourteen faucet, two twenty faucet, and one thirty-three Count Street. Whereas the City of Madisonville requests to dispose of the lots by means appropriate according to KRS eighty- Whereas the City of Madisonville owns the following lots, two fourteen faucet, two twenty faucet, and one thirty-three Couch Street. Whereas the City of Madisonville requests to dispose of the lots by means appropriate according to KRS eighty-two point oh eight three, and the lots that now therefore be it resolved as follows, the lots at two fourteen faucet, two twenty faucet, and one thirty-three Couch Street in Madisonville is now declared as surplus property. The city is authorized to advertise the lots for sale and dispose of the property by means according to KRS eighty-two point oh eight three. You might explain that we gave, these lots were given to us, those one lots.
Right, so the two lots, two fourteen faucet and two twenty faucet, were given to the city for the purpose of donating them to the city so that we can donate those back out, but they wanted the city to have those. They are buildable lots. Habitat for Humanity has expressed interest in those lots. It has been in the past, I know the city has been able to donate lots to Habitat for Humanity in the past. This is in an area that is mainly Habitat for Humanity homes, and this backs up to some of those properties. The one thirty-three Couch Street is one that we have had on the books that we are surplusing out.
We just got it from the master commissioner.
It came through the master commissioner's hands. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus of the property? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion?
So the, are we looking to donate all three lots to Habitat, or just, or the two, and then we're gonna put one out?
I believe it's just the two on faucet.
And then the other one will go out.
The other one will go out for sale bid.
For sale bid, okay.
We have a minimal bid on that.
Yes. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no motion passes. Next, we have a resolution to accept the bid for grapple truck.
Whereas the City of Madisonville advertised bids for a grapple truck to be opened on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at ten o'clock A.M., and we received two bids from, actually, we received like five different bids, but there was two companies that bid. Municipal Equipment, he bid a twenty twenty Kenworth for a hundred and twenty thousand, and then a twenty twenty-two Freightliner for a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Best Equipment had three different bids, Peterson of a hundred and forty-three thousand, two ninety-two, another one of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four seventy-one, ninety-one, and another one at a hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Whereas Municipal Equipment was the lowest and best bid and met the specifications that were required. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council accepts and awards the bid to Municipal Equipment for the grapple truck in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Right, do I have a motion to accept the bid for the grapple truck for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to Municipal Equipment?
Move.
A second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Is this a budgeted item? Okay.
It is a budgeted item, yes.
Good, thank you.
Have a motion and a second?
This come in of what we were expecting?
Say it better.
It was good to hear. Thanks for doing your due diligence.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no motion passes. Next, we have a motion to accept the bid for two eight-inch pumps.
Whereas the City of Madisonville advertised bids for two eight-inch pumps, one on Noel Avenue Lift Station and one on East Side Lift Station to be opened on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at ten thirty A.M., and the City of Madisonville received one bid from Exilem for the Noel Avenue was sixty-two thousand, nine dollars and thirty-three cents, and the East Side was seventy-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Whereas Exilem was the only bid received and met all the specifications that were required by the City of Madisonville, now therefore be it resolved that the city council accepts and awards the bid to Exilem for wastewater pump in the amount of sixty-two thousand, nine dollars and thirty-three cents for the Noel Avenue Pump Station, and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents for the East Side Pump Station.
Do I have a motion to accept the bids for the two eight-inch pumps?
I'll move.
A second?
Okay.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I know these were budgeted items, but did they come in of what we were expecting?
Well, under, the Noel Avenue pump, eighty dollars under budget, the East Side pump, four thousand dollars under budget.
For discussion, I really like seeing those numbers coming in under budget.
That's right.
It's not been typical of anything that we've been bidding so far.
Let's continue that.
Yes, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no motion passes. Next, we have a resolution to accept the offer to sell the surplus lots located at West Center Street, Madisonville, Kentucky.
Whereas the City of Madisonville listed the lots on West Center Street for sale with Dean Sheets of Heritage Homes Real Estate for the sales price of twenty-seven thousand dollars, and Heritage Homes Real Estate has received an offer to sell the property in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars as shown on the contract attached to Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council accepts the offer of twenty-seven thousand and allows Mayor Kevin Cotton to sign the uniform sales and purchase contract and all necessary paperwork to sell the lots on West Center Street for the sales price of twenty-seven thousand dollars to Joe and Shirley Thomas.
Do I have a motion to approve the offer for the lots on West Center Street?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion?
How long were these lots on, do we know how long they were out before there was an offer made?
They were, we listed them right after the last meeting, and this is a full-price cash offer.
I couldn't tell you exactly.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no motion passes. Last word of business that we have is a proclamation. Whereas the Door of Hope was established to serve the needs of women and men facing unplanned pregnancies, and whereas Door of Hope Pregnancy Care Center is dedicated to protecting the sanctity of all human life, and whereas Door of Hope renders services to its clients free of charge by relying on financial contributions, volunteers, and prayer support, and whereas twenty twenty marks twenty-four years for Walk for Life, now therefore be it resolved that I, Kevin Cotton, Mayor of the City of Madisonville, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, as Door of Hope Walk for Life Day in the City of Madisonville, Kentucky, and urge all citizens to consider contributing their resources to improve our city through community service and volunteerism, so presented on the twentieth day of September twenty twenty in Madisonville, Kentucky. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Nah, you didn't, you got close.